Everybody ready? Ready? All right, good evening, everyone. We are here this evening. We conduct the vicious dog hearing and we'll read the notice. Special meeting notice, Bennington Select Board, Monday, July 1st, 2025. Bennington Fire Facility, multi-purpose, 34, Montheridge River Street, Bennington, Vermont, 01. Agenda 6:00 PM, public hearing. Vicious dog hearing. This Tiffany Rounds. My name is Tom Haley, I have the honor of chairing this board. I will ask my other fellow board members to introduce themselves.
I'm Nancy White.
Jim Sullivan.
Thank you, Matts.
Good evening, I'm Clark Adams.
I'm Adam Woods. Also with us, Dan Monk, Assistant Town Manager. Nancy Lively, who's taking minutes. Don't speak back. I'll be monitoring anything audiovisual. A vicious pet hearing is a quasi judicial hearing. It must be conducted in accordance with Tom Bennington Wardens Article 9. Care control of animals and applicable state and federal laws regarding due process, et cetera. On then, July 3rd, 2025, we received a request from our Animal Control Officer, Kimberly Prozick, calling vicious dog hearing regarding Tiffany Rounds' dog Marvin as a result of the unprovoked dog bite incident on Water Street in the north Bennington. The way this hearing will work tonight is we will first hear from the complainant. The complainant will present evidence in support of the complaint. And witnesses from the complaint will present evidence. Then we will present questions directed to the complainant and the complainant's witnesses by the board. The pet owner will then present evidence in opposition to the complaint. Any witnesses to pet owner wishes to call will be allowed to present evidence. Which point the board and pets owners witnesses, I'm sorry, the board will question the pet owner and witnesses. That point, the complainants and the complainant's witnesses. Cross-examination of complainant's witnesses by pet owner through the board. I'll remind everyone that all questions should be directed to me. This can be an emotional situation, so they're not questioning any witnesses individually. Questions should be directed to me and then we will ask, I will ask the witness and cross-examination of pet owner and pet owner's witnesses by complainant through the board. Then any rebuttal or further marching vote parties, at which point the hearing will be adjourned and the board will deliberate and make a decision. So first order of business here is that anyone that intends to speak this evening, I'm going to ask you to stand, raise your right hand and swear an oath, tell us the truth. I solemnly swear or affirm under the pains and penalties of perjury that the statements I make, testimony I give and other evidence I submit to the select board at the select board's vicious pet hearing held on this date shall be true and correct to the best of my knowledge and belief. I do. If anyone else wishes to speak at any point, we will ask you to swear that oath. So first, I would invite the complainant, Officer Prozick.
Good evening, my name's Kimberly Prozick, I'm the Animal Control Officer for the town of Bennington. I started this position in July 2019. I have received training at the Vermont Police Academy for Animal Investigation 1 and Animal Investigation 2, also have seen animal control training in Vermont, League of Cities and Towns. I'm here to provide you with information regarding Tiffany Rounds' dog Marvin. Marvin is a five-year-old cane corset terrier mix. Marvin is an intact, which means he has not been murdered. I have had at least evening involvement with Marvin and Ms. Rounds since July of 2022. The first incident I had pertaining to Ms. Rounds' dog was on Wednesday, May 4th, 2022, which was reported around dogs running loose when she resided on Dewey Streets. I met with Ms. Rounds and advised her that she needed to keep her dogs running loose and explained to her the town of Bennington care control of animals ordinance. Found that both her dogs did not license and advised her she needed to license them with the pound. During the time Ms. Rounds resided on Dewey Street, she also, she co-owned two dogs, Marvin and a piper with her now ex-husband. The second loose dog report I received was on Friday, May 5th, 2023. There were reported two dogs running loose around the Stark Street playground and were acting aggressively towards children and adults. The officer that took the initial report spoke with the complainants to advise they were walking with their grandchildren and two gray and white pit bulls. Came from a house on Dewey Street and the dogs began to charge and bark at them. The officer then contacted Ms. Rounds to advise she was unaware that her dogs had gone out. Dogs were inside when the officer contacted Ms. Rounds. Ms. Rounds also advised that the dogs knew how to open the door. The officer suggested a baby gate to keep the dogs inside. I also spoke, Ms. Rounds just suggested keeping her doors locked and putting her dogs on leaves when they're outside. The first bite incident was on May 1st, 2023. I received an email from a female that resided in the apartment next to Ms. Rounds. The female reported that she and her son had been bitten by Ms. Rounds' dogs. No bite report on file from any hospital, as the female and her son did not go to the hospital or their primary care doctor. The female advised her son was walking up the stairs to go into their apartment and a dog ran up behind him and bit him. The female advised the same thing happened to her. The female advised the male dog Marvin was the one that bit her son. The female provided a picture of her son's wound, which appeared to be a small scratch in the shin just above the sock line. No pictures of the female bites were provided to me. Female was advised that both dogs were never on leashes and they attacked the windows when she brings the dogs outside. This bite report was unconfirmed. However, I did speak with Ms. Rounds regarding quarantining both dogs for 10 days. Both dogs were updated on Araby's vaccinations, Ms. Rounds was also provided with a copy of the town of Bennington care and child management ordinance. The second bite was on Monday, May 31st, 2023. I received a 911 call of a female walking her dog at the Stark Street playground. Now I was dispatching at the time of this incident. The female advised she was bitten by two pit bulls on the arm. An officer responded to take the information as I was dispatching during this incident. The officer's report in the officer's report, the officer met with the victim and took pictures of the victim's bite wound. The victim was bitten on her left wrist. The officer also reported that the dog, a beagle, was bitten on the left ear. The bite puncture the beagle's ear and went all the way through. The victim advised two pit bulls started from a backyard at her and the two beagles she was walking. The victim advised one of the pit bulls took one of the beagles by the collar of ear and shook it. When the victim grabbed the beagle to get away, the pit bulls sorry, when the victim grabbed the beagle to get away from the pit bull, she was then bit. The victim was treated at SMC and the beagle was treated at veterinary hospital. Ms. Rounds was not home at the time of the incident as she was returning from vacation. The health officer at the lot mailed a quarantine letter to Ms. Rounds, allowing the dogs to quarantine at home for 10 days. I spoke to Ms. Rounds in the lobby of the Bennington Police Department. Ms. Rounds advised she had been working on getting her dogs to classes and told me Marvin is already taking classes and she had an appointment to get him neutered. I suggested to Ms. Rounds that she must pull dogs every time they are outside and work on securing a proper fence in the backyard. Ms. Rounds advised that dogs learn how to open the front door and from now on, whenever she was not home, the dogs would be in crates inside the house. Ms. Rounds seemed concerned about the victim and the dog that was bitten. I sent Ms. Rounds a letter regarding our conversation I had with her in the lobby. The victim was advised that she could request a vicious dog hearing, the victim never requested a hearing. I also have pictures of that bite incident, but I did not include in the packet, but I do have those if you guys want to review those. The third bite was on July 2nd, 2025. I received notification from Officer Peckham of a dog bite that occurred on Water Street in North Bennington. Officer Peckham advised Ms. Rounds' dog Marvin, a five-year-old cane corset terrier mix, bitten the neighbor in the back of her leg. The officer advised the victim Alethea White was being transported to SMC and Marvin had a rabies vaccination. Pet vet rabies tag number, which expired March 8th, which expires March 8th of 2026. And the officer was advised that this was the first bite. This was the first bite incident. Immediately after receiving the information, I did check town of Bennington dog license website and found that Marvin was not licensed. I knew from prior incidents with Ms. Rounds that this was not the first bite with Marvin. So I contacted Officer, the health officer at the lot to advise her of the incident, as well as to confirm prior bite reports. And then requested officers return to Water Street to take Marvin into custody and bring to the animal control facility. Officers went to the residence, neither Ms. Rounds nor her partner Alan Watson were there. Officers contacted Ms. Rounds to advise she and Watson were at work. Officer scheduled to pick up Marvin for 3:30 PM that day. Officer Peckham and I arrived at the residence around 4:00 PM and met with Watson. Watson was outside with Marvin sitting at a picnic table. Marvin had a soft shell muzzle on and was on a leash. Marvin growled and barked at myself and Officer Peckham. Watson followed the officer night to the animal control facility. Watson placed Marvin in one of the outside portions of the kennel without incidents. I then had Watson call Ms. Rounds on the phone so I could explain what was going to happen. I advised Ms. Rounds that this was a significant dog bite and not the first bite from Marvin. I asked Ms. Rounds if she'd be willing to relinquish ownership of Marvin, to which she advised no. I then advised Ms. Rounds I would be applying for a vicious dog hearing. And Marvin would remain in my custody during the 10-day quarantine. I also advised Ms. Rounds that after the quarantine, I would continue to keep Marvin in my custody until the hearing. I provided all the paperwork to Watson to get to Ms. Rounds. I left a voicemail for Ms. White advising her Marvin was secure at the animal control facility and that I'd be applying for a vicious dog hearing. That following morning, I received a notification from an officer about advising Marvin had broken the outside fencing was running loose. By the time I arrived at the animal control facility, Marvin was back inside the building. Ms. Rounds and Mr. Watson were contacted to assist securing Marvin, but officers were able to get Marvin back in the facility as they were arriving. Officer Peckham and I secured the inside of the fencing with a pair of handcuffs and did not open the dog door that allowed Marvin to access the outside. At 6:30 PM that same day, Marvin had broke the interior fencing of the animal control facility and opened the interior door and ran out of the building. By the time I arrived, Marvin was running around the exterior of the building. I was able to catch Marvin and unleash him. Marvin was then taken to the Bennington Police Department, placed in a cell. Marvin remains at the Bennington Police Department in a cell. Marvin continues to be in the cell and I have been in regular conversation with Ms. White regarding her medical treatments. I do believe you have photographs of the kennel as well.
Does anyone wish to see the other photographs of Tiffany?
I'm satisfied, Nancy.
Yeah, we've been providing, yeah.
Okay, we have witnesses in support of the complaint. Questions go later, right?
Can I speak? I'm the previous victim of the dog.
Yeah. Yeah, anyone that wants to begin support of the complaint.
I think some of this would like to see them, not like to. Would you like to see the photographs?
From the first bite.
Yeah.
The dog as well as the individual.
You can take this microphone over here.
Oh, over here?
Yep.
My name's Deborah. Deborah, I'm the victim of the first attack in Stark Street playground.
Deborah, I'm sorry. Could you just spell your last name for a minute, say it here?
Yes, Deborah, E-R-H-E-M.
Thank you, sorry, Deborah.
No problem. I want a pair of beagles that belong to Paul. I've been walking them, I basically, several years, and we used to walk them Star Street, we came around a couple times a week. On this particular occasion, we had entered the park, we've gone around the mall, the beagles love to go on that little bike path because they love up the up and down. We didn't encounter anybody, we didn't encounter dogs, we didn't count any, any people. We were on our way out of the park when I had that feeling, you know, that feeling yet and there's, you think you're in danger, and I turned around to see two dogs running from the back of a house on Dewey Street and aiming right toward us, no barking, there was never any barking, they were clearly trying, planning to ambush us from behind. And within seconds, they were on us. The larger one grabbed the littlest beagle by the back of its neck and was viciously shaking it back and forth, trying to break his neck or break his back. The other one had circled around behind me and was trying to, like, worry the other people from behind. I was screaming and yelling at this dog and pushing it and hitting it and trying to get it to drop this beagle because it was clearly trying to kill it in front of me. I did finally get it to drop the dog, which was on my feet. The other dog came around to sort of help and the other beagle was able to escape. And then I was bending down to protect the beagle in my hands. And that's when the dog started biting my hands. As I was trying to put them down to shield this beagle from being killed by this large dog that was trying to attack it. The beagle suffered extensive wounds on both ears, on its neck and on its back, as it was cracked repeatedly and shaken as the dog, Marvin, was trying to kill it. And it has suffered PTSD ever since then, it's basically terrified of everything and goes into defending its life when anything startles it. As for me, we don't go back to Stark Street, I haven't been to walk down that street, you don't go to the playground. We can't even walk by Stark Street on Dewey because it's still very traumatizing. I have to say that I was never contacted and offered the opportunity to schedule a vicious dog hearing and I don't think anyone ever contacted Paul, so otherwise we would have probably done this two years ago. And I guess that's it. Deborah?
Thank you. I have a question, Tom. Can you just confirm the date of the July incident that you referred to?
I believe it was July 31st, 2023.
Thank you. Anyone else that wishes to speak?
So my name's Paul Vanderweeland, I'm one of the two beagles that I've been here. I was just looking at the description of the damage to, by and under or smaller beagle image and the dog was run out, had peeled back skin, had multiple punctured wounds. Both of its ears had shredding and punctures. The dog was literally covered, but it had to go to bed multiple times to deal with the infections that came from this type of injury. And we were asked if we wanted to have the animal put down because of how extensive the injuries were. We were told by the officer that came out that this had been a dog that had multiple attacks to humans and would be put down more than likely. And we were never contacted about a hearing process like this. I just assumed that these dogs would be handled by the system and didn't pursue it any further. I'm shocked to learn what's happened since, and I think this was easily preventable based on the injuries and the hospitalization of our dog walkers, this just shouldn't have happened. So we're actually terrified to go anywhere near that house on Dewey in fear that these dogs are going to come out and attack one of us, but they know nothing about our dogs. I just can't believe we have dogs that's running around town, everyone knows about it and we're not doing anything about it, so I'm just a little shocked. That's all I have to say.
Any questions?
Well, according to the procedure, we'll take questions at everybody's. So you're good, okay.
In the officer's report, it doesn't say anything about the conversation she had with Paul regarding the dog coming euthanized. And I was, have been in contact with with Deborah and advised her that she could request a vicious dog here herself. I think that was it.
Good evening, my name is Robert Ford, here with my wife Sarah Mett. And we were the family that made 2023 at the Stark Street playground. I'm very fortunate that I was there because my young granddaughter was riding her bike on the track and two dogs came charging, charging out of the yard, barking and heading right forward for her. I was about five feet away, I was going to grab my granddaughter, pick her up and hold the bike up to stop the dogs charging at us. It was, my granddaughter has been, she can't even walk down the street near a dog, she's easily picked up, it was just a terrible, terrible experience. And I appreciate the officers responding and letting us know at the time that the dog would be taken here. We thought the dog would be taken care of a long time ago, but we're surprised there were so many more incidents that happened. So I'm, you know, I think you can read into the story, how many instances this dog has been involved in. And there were two dogs there on Stark Street, this incident occurred. And if I wasn't there, it'd be a totally different story. That's all I got to say.
My name is Normine Strang, do you need me to spell that? So I have known Alethea since she was 10 or 11 years old, and Alethea is the victim here. She lived in my home, she is my daughter's best friend. And as an adult, we also live together and she lives in my home, so I care very deeply about her and what has happened to her and what her life is now going to be like due to this situation and this incident with this dog. Her life will never be the same, ever. She was taken to, I received pictures and I'm not sure from her fiancee the day of the bite, and I'm not sure if you've all seen them, but you definitely should if you haven't. And then I went to the hospital where she ended up spending several days, had two surgeries to there and then was sent home to basically recover. And it was the Wednesday following when she was sent home, she started to notice that there was like a drainage coming from the back of her dress wound, dressing, and was taken back to SMC, where I believe they did one more surgery there. And then determined that this bite and the infection was so severe that they could not handle it here and she was sent to Dartmouth. And she spent several days at Dartmouth and had two more surgeries there. And was just sent home. And now will be having, I was there today when home health came in because they will need to be coming in regularly to change, she has a wound back that's sucking out all of the infection that's in her leg. They've talked about in the future her needing skin grafts and physical therapy and all manner of medical things. She's a server. Was, that's her livelihood and she works at the Equinox Restaurant. In my opinion, it will be months and months before Alethea is able to get back on her feet. And I was there today, as I mentioned, when home health came in. And because of the infection was so bad in her leg when she was taken to Dartmouth, if you saw the initial pictures, there was a large piece of skin that separated. That entire piece of skin had to be removed and now she had a gaping hole in the back of her calf that is two centimeters deep. And I believe the home health nurse told me nine and a half centimeters long and five and a half this way. And she'll be having repeated trips to Dartmouth, I'm taking her back there on Monday. And this is going to be an ongoing thing for her. Her life will never be the same, yes, will she recover and maybe get back on her feet in one day? But this is a road that she shouldn't be walking now. This was preventable. She came to my home last year and told me that this dog went after her and her dog. And she was able to get in her car and drive to my home last summer. And she was physically shaken by that incident. And I advised her that she needed to speak with the dog's owner, could potentially call the police, I don't know, but also the landlord, like where she was living with this dog, she was not safe. But I think things were just kind of blown over and maybe she thought it would get better, but then on this particular day when she's just walking out to her car to go to work, the dog attacks her for no reason. And I'm pretty sure, I'm I am, I agree, this never should have happened, this was preventable and for, but for that very reason, a 35-year-old woman, well now she's been sitting in her apartment, not able to really hardly get out, walk, anything, and her life would be completely changed because of this incident. I'd like to show you, if possible, the pictures of the wound today that I took when I was there with home health, I have them on my phone. The home health woman also took pictures because of course she'll be documenting progress. She's a wound care specialist. But if possible, I would like to show you those today so that you can see now what the wound looks like.
Yeah, please.
I just want to see how yeah, this is, that's only this one, I've been through today, okay. Okay, yeah, I think they have the initial bite, they saw the initial bite. This is today. This is the initial bite. And this is today. They show this wounds is going to take months. Months. They cut me, they cut this entire lap of skin out because of the bacteria and she has this wound back that she has to have on her. Until we go back Monday, we'll find out how things go from there, but we don't know how long this will be, this is today. This is the day she was bit, they removed this entire area because of the infection. That shouldn't have happened. I'm sorry, it should not have happened to her.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak in support of the complaint? So any questions before, for any of the witnesses in person?
All right, thank you. Officer Prozick, you mentioned that you brought this dog to the animal control facility, is that very important?
Yes.
Is this the first time a dog has been held in the facility? I know it's sort of Have there ever been any dogs that have managed to even escape from the facility before?
I've had dogs that have broken, like the inside of the fencing, but it was the way that it was put in, so it got fixed. But no, this is the first time a dog's escaped from the outside and inside of the, of the building.
Great.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jackie.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, I have a couple of questions. Okay. You, uh, the, the report, uh, that I read mentions, uh, that the, the owner of the pet, uh, indicated that they intended to have the, the pet moved in, is that right?
Correct. Uh, on, I believe it was the the, the, the bite at the, on July thirty-first, she did advise that she was working on getting dog classes as well as making an appointment to, to have moved her.
Yeah.
July thirty-first of twenty twenty-three, she advised, she was making appointments to get the dog moved.
Okay. Uh, and then I, you, you mentioned in July of twenty twenty-five, the owner indicated that this was the first bite from that.
That's what the officer told me, that she was advised by, by Ms. Round.
Okay. You mentioned, uh, that there was another dog, uh, in the, the same house, uh, um, is that dog also unlicensed?
I'm not sure. That dog is, I believe with the, um, her ex-husband, and I'm not sure where that dog is now.
Okay. Um, did you ever, uh, assess the temperament of, of that pet?
Oh, no.
Um, and then you had mentioned, uh, uh, sort of why the, there wasn't a vicious dog hearing after the, the second bite on. But I, can you just go over that again, that you had verbally offered that?
Yes, so the July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three bite, I had advised the, the bite victim that she could apply for vicious dog hearing. I did not apply for one, no. And it was the, the first bite that happened in May wasn't really confirmed. So I couldn't confirm whether or not Marvin or the other female dog that lived there had been. Because the bite, the, the pictures that I received did not appear to be of a dog bite. It appeared to be of a scratch which could have occurred anywhere. So I did not, um, consider that to be a dog bite. And then on the July thirty-first one, I did advise that they could apply for vicious dog hearing if they felt they wanted one, but there was never one.
Okay. And, and was that just a, a verbally, or is there like a, a sort of standard when letter or something, and just sending the whole thing?
To request for vicious dog?
I, to, to let a bite victim know that it's, that's an option.
I spoke to her on the phone and advised her of that. But it's, I, it all is also in the town of Bennington Care and Patrol, the animal's ordinance.
Okay. All right, thank you, Officer Krasik.
June, the recorder.
Thanks. Um, yeah, I just wanted to, um, can follow up and confirm that the first incidents, multiple incidents in the Dewey Street, Stark Street area had, did you, um, confirm that each of the, um, action, vicious actions by a dog was in fact Marvin? Like, had that been the dog's identity that confirmed in each of those cases?
It was both Marvin and, um, Piper.
But it was definitely both, both that you knew that those are those.
Each report, both dogs were ones running loose, yeah.
And, and the, the dog that, that did the, the actual biting in the second incident was definitely Marvin?
On the bite report, it lists both dogs.
Okay. Yeah.
Thanks for your time. I have a couple of questions. Uh, the complaint in twenty twenty-three where the dog, it sounded like they were threatened and didn't actually attack that child. But in the context of previous involvement with this animal, that raised some level of concern that action should have been taken sooner than, than later with these, these animals?
I had spoken to her about options that she could do to keep her dogs contained, this muzzle, fence and yard leads, things to prevent this from happening further.
But from what I'm hearing, those weren't acted upon. Do we have some sort of mechanism to monitor what's going on? You have, like, in my first opinion, very threatening vicious animals on the streets of our town that are terrorizing people. Uh, I, I'm hard pressed to understand why this progressed to where we're at now with people being seriously, not like threatening, limb-threatening injuries. Seems to me if this, this animal is terrorizing the neighborhood, I don't understand why we have to wait for it to grievously injure somebody before we move. And if, and if it's an ordinance issue, uh, we have a select board need to act to strengthen that ordinance, but I'm, I'm concerned that on multiple occasions, your office will provide vicious animals or hostile animals roam the streets, and I don't see any concrete action on the part of the town to address this until we're, where we're at now. People's animals almost being killed, other people having their limbs threatened with these attacks. I'm hard pressed to sort out how that evolved. Whereas the bottom line is, it's just something we have a select board to do to make sure this doesn't ever happen again. That vicious animals are just pretty much told, don't do that again, and allowed to continue. That's what I'm, my concern is, I think. A, kind of, I'm not to attack you, but almost like a laissez-faire event. You have vicious animal roaming the street, threatening people, terrorizing them, and nothing happened. I think, and, and, you know, if it's something that we, um, select order need to address, please let us know, and I promise you, I'll do my best to address it.
I, I think at the time, the ordinance was written differently. There was not the levels of um, aggressive dogs as there, as the ordinance states now. And I, I did do what I could following the ordinance and suggested that the muzzle be used when the dogs are outside. So I, I mean, I did my best by following the, the town ordinance at the time.
Well, that's all I want to hear. If you're telling me now that it's subsequent to that event, or ordinance has been strengthened to give you and your agency greater authority to address hostile or vicious animals roaming the streets to move forward. So in fact, if that were to have happened now, where would we have gone with this, this animal terrorizing families while on the streets without actually attacking them? Where would we go?
So Mr. Chair, that point of order, this hearing has determined whether the dog was vicious, not the actions of the officers in previous. And since I don't, I'm not minimizing that, but that's something we could have at a future meeting to discuss. We really should focus on.
Yeah. Is there a question?
Well, that's, my, my question is, how do we end up? And what was going on that allowed us to end up here? And I'm now hearing, in fact, the circumstances of the ordinance basically resulted in continuations in dog behaviors which got us here. And I'm also hearing that that is no longer the case. So I guess my question is, what will we do? And now I understand we have tougher for a sort of ordinance on the books.
Yeah, that, that is something we can specify here, but right now, yeah. Yeah, I mean, are you in questions for the witness, specific to the testimony? Do you have an answer for you?
The vet bills for the Beagle, sorry. The vet bills for the Beagle? Um, did you pay everything?
I sure did. And if I, the more angry, I get the more I want to take civil action, but I thought the whole thing kind of had been put to bed at this point. Um, that was the one thing that the police officer did discuss with me was taking simple action against the owners of the dog. Since the town, well, I'm going to take action, you know, um, whatever animal control decided was best. That's what the officer told me at the time, but because there was multiple incidents, she's never heard of it. That resulted in a dog being moved for that. That's what the police officer told me. I don't know who this person is. She's never reached out to contact me. We were almost two thousand dollars on the bill on a six-thousand-dollar dog. And I'm pretty upset about it.
And when the dog charged yourself and the child, did you report that?
Absolutely. We, we called the police and they responded right away. You were very.
They need you folks to be speaking into a microphone. I'm sorry, the doctor, that TV won't be able to insert that part of the testimony.
I'll speak live, but.
It needs to be in the microphone, sir.
What do you need me to say? That bill's two thousand dollar neighborhood. Yes, I did pay them all. Yes, I was told I'd take civil action against the owners of the perpetrating dogs. I was told that once they'd already attacked a human once before, this was the second incident that the dog more than likely be euthanized. And I left it at that because I thought that was enough. Um, I'm feeling terrible that I didn't take action now because it's could have been preventable. But now I'm feeling like I should take civil action against them because they're not doing anything to prevent what was happening. So we have, uh, this isn't gonna end here.
Thank you. That's your second question.
Your, your question, you asked me, uh, they responded immediately. They were very quickly. And I did get a follow-up from the animal control officer saying that, you know, the town ordinance requires them to do certain steps. And it's something that couldn't happen right away. They had to follow certain steps and let the owner of the dog know what procedures were valid at that time. But I, but thank you for the police responding to it.
I have just one question.
Or the person right now who's dealing with, with the bite and everything that isn't covered by insurance? Can I ask, Dan, is she getting any help or?
I would have, I would have to know much about that one.
Oh, I didn't think that, you know, I could ask the question.
You want to know if the victim has insurance?
No, what isn't covered under insurance? Is she getting any assistance for that?
Well, um, we do not know at this point in time what the medical bills will look like. One can only imagine a stay at S B M C, uh, emergency room visit, a stay at Dartmouth, multiple surgeries, home help, physical therapy. So we, of course, it's just been, I want to say ten days. I'm sorry, I don't know, we can't figure it out right now. Um, but, so I don't think we've seen any bills yet. But certainly they will be coming, um, and what insurance covers and what they don't cover, we don't know yet. But there is the piece that she's also unable to work. Um, she worked two jobs and now she's unable to work. So how will she continue to live? There's that piece that one needs to consider as well.
Thank you.
And I think my question is for Officer Krasik, are we hearing testimony on two dogs that are questioned here, Marvin and Piper? Both dogs are, are, uh, were here testimony regarding behavior from both dogs?
Back in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, it was two dogs that were involved. It was Marvin and the sibling that was residing there, but that, that dog's no mom or living.
Those two dogs have separated past. And today's here on this, today's, any action that this board takes will be regarding one of them, not both of them.
Correct, the male dog, Mark.
Thank you. Um, Officer Krasik, um, that, a couple of points, um, the reports you referred to your dogs as pit bulls. And you indicated it was.
It's a keen horse or terrier mix.
Okay, you're confident that you should save dogs. And you said when, um, you went to pick the dogs up, it had been muzzleled at that point?
Yes, it had a soft, soft shell muzzle wound.
Do you think that's a sufficient muzzleloader for this dog, or dog besides?
He would need a, probably a different type of muzzle, not a Sasha.
Yeah, it's also, yeah. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, Dean reporter? Officer Krasik, thank you. Is Marvin's owner present? It's your turn to, um, to any events you wish.
My, my name is Alan Watson, Senior, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Tiffany because she's so nervous and distraught that she feels she's competently talked to folks tonight. If you have any questions directly to her, then we'll, we'll deal with that. I'm gonna go through the scenarios for you on our behalf.
I can just interrupt. Mr. Watson, is this Ms. Round's with you?
What?
Yes.
This round's sitting next to. Um, I have known Tiff for a couple of years. Tiff, for a couple of years. She lives in Off of Water Street, North Bennington. And she's, um, trying to get ahead in the world. She's had some tough sledding, and she's trying to get ahead. At the time of the incidents up on Stark Street, the first incident, she and her husband Brian lived on Dewey Street. When the first incident happened with the Beagle, she was not living on Stark Street at that time. She was staying with friends and they were in the process of a divorce. So she didn't get Marvin until about a year ago from that situation when she moved to North Bennington. So although she is a responsible party to it, she wasn't there, so she couldn't control, control Marvin or be there to muzzle him when he went outside. At her home in North Bennington, she had a ten-by-ten enclosed fence cage. And she had a steel-leader leash that reached to her back door. So anytime Marvin went out of the house, he went out on a leash and/or directly to the wire enclosure. So he was secured. The night of the incident, he, the morning of the incident, the day of the incident, he was on his leash. And she had just let him out, when all of a sudden, right outside her door, the incident occurred. And, and I believe that the, um, victim um, was coming out through and either had her dog with her or her dog was trying to get out around her. And I suspect that may have been some preclude to the incident occurring. Not taking anything away from what happened. I'm just saying that I think there's other circumstances to the incident that haven't been talked about. Um, I've, I've been over to Tiffany's apartment on several occasions. I've walked up to Marvin. Jump up, bark at me, jump up on my lap and lick my face. Never any aggressive behavior at all to me. Um, got photographs of when they were there about two months ago, roughly. Um, Tiff was home at her apartment that night, and one of her friends stayed over. And about midnight, the young lady took Tiffany's car and Marvin for enjoyment. The young lady had a car accident somewhere. We don't know exactly where, but Marvin flew off the seat and bounced off the windshield and shattered the windshield. I suspect he got a concussion. Don't know. Speculation that his head put a hole in the windshield that big around. About a month later from that, in early July, late June, early July, Marvin was given a dog treat that apparently was tainted with Listeria. And over the next two months or next month, he has gone through some major medical issues. He's been on major antibiotics, a thousand dollars worth of vet bills, and has just lost fifteen pounds of weight. And then this incident occurred just as he was starting to recover from that incident. The, the dog company, I'm not gonna mention their names for obvious legal reasons, but the dog company that made the biscuits have agreed to pay all of his vet bills of well over a thousand dollars. for getting him back to actually living. There was con- continuous conversation about him being put down then for the major infection he got internally from the listeria. And he was on major antibiotics. He was on two medications, one of which the, um, symptoms are ag- aggression as a symptom, while aggression is listed as a possible behavioral side effect. Some veterinarian resources request that the medication actually decrease pain and in turn reduce um, inflation, yeah, inflammation. So I have pictures of those medications here if you want to see what they were or not. Um, since the incident, obviously, when Marvin got loose down at the, uh, enclosure on Willow Road, um, when Tiffany and my son Alan Junior, um, went looking for him, they found him. And he had at that point been down through Willow Brook and Apple Gate and over onto Harwood Hill Road where he had been observed. And then back towards the town grass. He was trying to get home. And when they pulled in the driveway, the dog ran across the parking lot and jumped through the driver's side window into the car to be with them. He's been away from them for fourteen plus days now. Um, he, um, he is not neutered, but I have an appointment for a veterinarian here to get him neutered. He should have been neutered previously, but there was no help available and Tiff couldn't afford to pay for the neutering of the dog. I agree that that will help reduce his aggression for sure. Um, I agree that a muzzle should be on him all times when he's outside, even though he's friend- friendly to the people he knows and stuff. There are people that he doesn't know and there are people that will make any dog be aggressive. I have dogs that are couch potatoes and they'll still growl at somebody at times. It's not unusual for a dog to be aggressive and protect somebody. She's a single mom with two sons. And that's her protection. She wanted to do something else for protection, but her landlord wouldn't let her. So, um, she's he does, he is licensed in the town of Shasbury. I have his license right here if you want to see it. He's licensed in the town of Shasbury. He's not, he's not going to go back to North Bennington. He's gonna go and he's gonna live in Shasbury. A picture of his kennel that was moved today to Shasbury. And, um, I think that, you know, I, Piper, who's the other dog, is still living up on Dewey Street.
She, she moved.
She's moved out to.
My ex-husband got it, so.
So.
Didn't have the time for it, but.
Um, the, um, the si- situation here is I think that, that there's no doubt that Marvin has got some behavioral issues. I think the neutering will help. I think that the incidents of him bouncing off the windshield and having, uh, the medic, the listeria, et cetera, I think are mitigating services to his recent aggressions. We don't know which dog it was that caused the issue up on Stark Street. Um, it was both dogs were there. Which one grabbed that dog? We don't know. You don't know and this law enforcement officer doesn't know for sure. Um, she said she wasn't sure. She was assuming. Um, and I think that, um, under those circumstances, you know, the dog is her son Jack's pet. And I think it would be a terrible shame, even though he has had this aggressive intake. He's not gonna be in Bennington and he's gonna be muzzled at all times when he's outside. I think that's cause enough to say that, you know, this is the first confirmed incident that it was Marvin, not the third.
Ms. Rounds?
Yes, sir.
Agree with me, didn't you? Missed it?
Absolutely.
Is there anything you want to add to that?
Um, just that Marv has made a complete turnaround since my divorce. Um, there was a lot of fighting going on and whatnot and the, and the dogs were defending each other and they would, they would collide with each other. So, but since I moved out, he has, he's made such a difference. And then this happened. Um, he, he was raised in, um, Texas where he was abused prior to us getting him and his sister. I don't know what actually happened with her, but, um, other than that, I don't want my dog's life to be taken for my negligence and not being right there to eat with him.
Questions, I hear. Yeah, but I will see if there are any more witnesses for the, um, Ms. Rounds.
Can we ask questions?
We'll, we'll answer that, Mark. Yep. Um, and so I have a couple of questions. Um, the accident that happened as a result of what you called a joyride, is there a record of that?
No.
So we have.
I just have pictures.
Nowhere.
I have, I have pictures of my car. I didn't turn my.
There was a smashed windshield, smashed front fender, smashed bumper.
I don't remember.
It wasn't reported because we didn't want to get the young lady in trouble.
Um, this is, I think, a question for the animal control officer, maybe the town manager, assistant town manager. This dog is licensed in Shasbury, but this incident happened in our jurisdiction? Is that correct?
Yeah, it is not. I confirm, I confirm that the dog is not licensed.
Okay, you can confirm that the incident happened in Bennington, which is why we're here tonight.
North, but town, the town.
Town, that's in your brain. I'm just gonna make a comment. Ms. Rounds, inability to pay for your dog and its care is not an excuse to have allowed this dog to cause this kind of damage in this community. So we, we read in the report that there were agreements to neuter, there were agreements to train, and there were agreements to muzzle on more than one occasion. And we're hearing tonight that there is a vet appointment. Yeah, I think the report was that there was a vet appointment sometime ago. I wanted on the record that I am absolutely opposed to a dog owner who cannot afford to care for their dog. The last comment I'll make is that I also have a Texas rescue who is a love to the people who he knows and he will never be out of my care because he can't be, he cannot be trusted.
Um, yeah, I have a question. It's a question, I think, to probably, uh, Mr. Monks. This, this dog is licensed in Shasbury and is purportedly to be relocated to Shasbury. Does that affect our jurisdictional oversight of this matter at all?
My understanding is the dog is going to animal control officer still, uh, listed with our custody. Is that, is that accurate?
That is correct.
So the dog is in Bennington.
So, so the, this, this board, because, because the incident occurred in Bennington and the dog is in Bennington, in Bennington's control, then we, we still have jurisdiction over this matter?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The two dogs that we've been hearing about on Stark Street, with Marvin and Marvin and the other dog?
Piper.
If there is a question, it was anybody, everybody knows these were the same two dogs that were together? I was not, I was not home, but those two, yes, resided together on Dewey Street.
Whether they were the dog or not?
I wasn't even there.
We don't know.
And had I known or was able to reach out to these people, I didn't have any idea of their names or anything. So. And to the Beagle owners, did, did you know where the dogs lived?
Yeah, I'm sure they responded to the nine one one call says she knew the owner personally and that just happened multiple times. And she was gonna confirm with her, the, the dogs could not have a rabid situation that we had worried of image it. She moved out immediately and called us immediately and said, yep, the dogs are up to date on their rabies shot. So she was able to make contact with her immediately. And the owner confirmed that the dogs were loose. And she wanted to know what she could do in this situation. So she seemed highly aware of what's going on.
Yeah.
Um, on the other hand.
Yeah, I'm sorry. At this point, we, we.
That's for the Beagle owners.
Yeah, um, we've already examined the, you know, the previous witnesses. There will be an opportunity for possible.
Hi, Ms. Rounds. My question is, it looks like we're looking at a series of behaviors over the last three years. I've heard recently there have been events of potential trauma and medical issues. And I also heard that there was a previous commitment to address concerns of this dog's behavior. And also hearing the dogs going to Shasbury. My question is, based on history, why should we accept the idea of sending a problem like this to Shasbury? I, I'd be very unhappy with her, Shasbury, with sending a dog that had been viciously attacking its residents to Bennington.
Because, because the dog's going to be muzzled and neutered. And I'm, and I'm gonna confirm that.
Excuse me, sir. I think we've already vetted right and that was a commitment made more than two years ago. And since then, we've had two more significant events.
You want, you want to see the appointment schedule right here?
Sir, when the, the incident supposedly happened with the Beagle and I wasn't there. My husband and, my ex-husband and I were in the, in the process of getting divorced. So it was unexpected to me. It was a situation that happened that he was unfaithful and changes had to happen quickly. So I moved out and brought my kids to North Bennington. And since then, we separated the dogs and he doesn't have her anymore. So it was just like, and then you're right, yes, this happened, but.
Again, I, everything that I read here and what I've heard has been a series of events and promises and commitments that didn't seem to happen. It seemed to have accelerated what's going on. So my, my question is, I, how can we be assured or why should we be assured that what we're hearing today will be carried out any more expeditiously than that? What promises were made in the past? I'm, I'm hard pressed to accept that.
Jamie.
Uh, I'm, um, can you, I don't know if you mentioned this already, um, but you mentioned, um, that there was some potential head trauma to Marvin in this auto accident. I, do you know about what date, uh, when did that happen?
Oh, goodness.
Yes, I'm sure.
I would say probably
the end of July.
I don't know.
Or, sorry.
The end of May of this year.
Of this year.
Um, and the, um, then you said there was also, um, a, a dog treat that had listeria. Uh, when was that?
What?
When was that?
Wait, you mentioned there are things that were related to focus on this.
That, that, the vet, that, that bill was in early June.
It was this year?
Yeah, yes, absolutely.
Oh. Ms. Rounds, uh, the, the Beagle incident, it sounds like you were aware of, of that incident at the time.
Um, I got notified after I happened.
Oh, shortly after that?
Yes. I was on vacation, headed home and got a phone call. My, his sister learned how to turn the doorknob and open up the door and they both went out.
So, um, okay, I just, I'm trying to understand the timeline, but it sounds like concerns about Marvin's behavior, feeding, dating, the potential head trauma in the Beagle or the, the dog, the animals.
Yes.
The first medical bill was July's or June sixth.
Okay.
Um, that was the first day. He was not probably two, two days after the ingestion of the listeria painted dog treat.
Alright, thank you.
And, and the dog lost solid fifteen pounds and he went from being husky to skin and bones. Went into partial renal failure. And it, you know, took probably a month for him to get back to where he was actually eating and stuff on his own. So I'm not making excuses for him. I'm just saying the dogs had a lot of issues for the last, a lot of incidents that weren't his fault for the last six months.
Understood. Some might have a whole picture.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, at this point, I'm sorry, buddy, we know the victim.
Oh, he's still over here.
Yeah. So Tom, uh, because of the mobility issues with and asking to bring the mic to them. So, I know it's a little out of order, but.
You sure you can do that?
Yeah.
Well, no, you don't have, you don't have.
No, you don't have.
We'll bring the mic.
You want to set up this probably about.
Did you swear the oath on?
No, they, they actually missed the oath. They didn't have to, they didn't have to.
Okay.
So I'm not gonna brief you. Why don't you just write that down? Say you want.
I do have to ask you to at least raise your right hand. Um, I saw him swear affirm under the ban to mental disinsurance, read the statements I made as well. I give another evidence I submit to the sled board, have the sled board's hearing held on this day, showing true and correct to the best of my knowledge. Please say I do.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
So I wonder if I can speak here.
Take all the time you need to sit here, so not rush.
Um, I have been living at Southern Water Street since two thousand twenty-one. Um, when Tiffany moved in, she did not have her dog, but I knew that she had dogs. Um, shortly after her dog did end up coming to live there, um, not once were we introduced. Our dogs weren't introduced. Um, so it's always been like the I'm here, she's there. Um, there are, there were multiple incidents where I, coming into my house and leaving my house, the dog, her dog Marvin, um, thrashes itself against the, so at the top of my stairs, leaving my house, there's a door that we share that leads into her kitchen. Um, so every time I would leave or enter my stairs to go into my apartment, her dog barks, thrashes itself against the door. Um, there have been times where I literally thought the dog would bust through that door and just, that's the end. Um, there was an incident last April where I was walking my dog, um, and I was coming down my driveway to go back to my house. And I noticed her dog was on the lead, but I hesitated a little bit and stopped walking. And it was then that her dog broke the lead, charged at me and my dog, and I was able to get myself and my dog into my car. And I drove to, um, Noreen's house. I did contact my landlord, um, he's well aware of everything. Um, and then I told Tiffany, Tiffany wasn't home. She was in Florida. She had someone caring for the dog, but left the dog unattended. Um. Sorry, guys, I this is horrible. There was another incident where um, me and Lucian were coming home and. Marvin saw us and busted the screen out of the window. As if it was going to jump out and again attack. Um, the dog is aggressive. There's no if, ands, or buts about it. Um, this incident, I was literally walking to my car to go work. My dog was not with me, so I don't know where that came from. Snapped his leash and literally just put a friggin' chunk on my leg like I it's. I think. Rehoming this dog to Shasberry is the worst idea ever. Something's gotta be done with this dog. And rehoming it, muscling it, essentially, and fencing it in is not the answer, like. Absolutely. Are you kidding?
No, please don't back and forth. And if there is any, I will ask completely, sir. You're fine, just continue.
Yes, putting this dog down is what needs to happen.
Okay.
Terrorizing. And if.
I'm I'm sorry, you're gonna you need to take.
Okay, thank you. At this point, you do have the ratings, um, to cross examine. Uh, the complaint, the complaint, these witnesses. If you wish to do so, will the review question to me and if I mean them appropriate or ask the or if you have any questions.
I would like to confirm with Officer Crossit and the woman that they can identify that it was definitely one hundred percent Marvin and not. Piper. That did the biting of the Beagle. Because that's a big one. And I think that we have to know whether it was Marvin or whether it was Piper. Because Piper's not around anymore. She hasn't been rehomed out of the area. And. You know, if it wasn't Marvin, then why are we sentencing Marvin to death? Or something that he may not have done?
Officer Crossit. Did you hear the question? I do want to know if we were able to say. One hundred percent that it was Marvin that bit the Beagle.
Just gonna refer back to my report.
I can't confirm whether it was Marvin or Piper. It says two dogs. So they were both out, they were both running. I have to take it as they both did the biting. And that's how I handle this situation. I do not.
Tom, would you have the person who was actually there?
Yeah, did you, could you say for sure it was Marvin?
There were two dogs. One was larger, very dark, and then was the smaller one. The darker and larger dog was the one that bit me. Keep away from the fact that I was bitten. As well as the one that attacked the Beagle. The smaller one was behind me and didn't bite him, didn't do anything. That was Piper. She's stockier, bigger, and darker.
Thank you.
Bottom discussion, stop here whenever you're ready.
Okay. Do you have any other questions?
Not yet.
And so I have a question for Ms. Rollins. I think we heard tonight in testimony that there were two incidents of you being on vacation. Where there was a an incident related to your dogs. One was in the Star Street Park and one was at Gerald apartment in North Bennington. Am I understanding the testimony correctly?
Um, yes, sir. Well, I wasn't on vacation, but for this one, I had just gotten up to go to work.
Okay, I got the the sense that we're not home and out of town. And I just want to find out that.
Beagle was there with him. He wasn't unattended.
Okay, not in your care.
Correct.
Thank you.
I'm I'd like to clarify something with the different witnesses. These two animals, Piper. Someone describing Piper's size and color versus Marvin's size and color.
Um, Piper's.
You'll need to take a microphone.
He he did.
Right, you need to speak at a microphone. Thank you.
Piper is all black, Mark is kind of short gray.
Thank you. Now, could someone tell me which animal was been identified as attacking the victim? We have someone here to say which animal it was. Can you describe that animal, which you know which one it was? Yes, ma'am.
Marvin attacked me.
Marvin.
Ma'am, Marvin is the holding dog that she has in her care right now. Yes.
So the dog infected Beagle, ma'am, you said, were the stocky, dark dog, which I understand is not Piper. Is that what they're describing is Piper?
Um, the dog that, do you need this?
Yes, please.
Both dogs.
The reason for that is it's being recorded and.
Both dogs attacked me. I was menaced and attacked by both dogs. The dog that seemed to be in the lead seemed to be the Beagle. Um, but both dogs were surrounding me, um, attacking me, grabbing at the Beagles. Um, so that they would. Larger one seemed to be in front, the smaller one is in back. The smaller one was trying to bite the Beagle through my legs. The larger one was in front. Um, I got bitten several times.
Didn't bite the larger or smaller dog or any uncertain man?
The larger dog was in front and I was using my hands to shield the Beagle. Um, but then again, the other dog was sticking its nose through from behind, so.
Can't say for definite which dog bit you?
My sense would be it would be the dog in front, but I can't say that. Was that so? There was no attacking me. Because I had them surrounding me, running around me, farting, giving snapping, growling, grabbing Beagle. There wasn't outside witness.
All right, again, somebody can clarify. It's my mind confused now which dog was on the biting. I'm hearing Marvin and Piper and.
Officer that came from the nine one one call. Went and saw the dog. One of the dogs was blood all over it. She's the one that confirmed it. Was it the animal control officer? It was the police officer that attended that went and saw the dogs and confirmed that they were relocked up. So one of those dogs was covered in blood. That's the dog.
Do we know what dog that was?
Yeah, we had a sort of documentation from the officer that which dog was probably blood. I don't have one. They're seeing that and they're overlooked with force.
Looks like Officer Crossy might be looking for her.
In the officer's report, she's the one who finished the report. It doesn't specify which dogs and both dogs, but so.
Both dogs got blood on them?
It doesn't say in the report anywhere that there was blood on any of the dogs. Doesn't say anything like that. All it said is that. I I mean, I can read the officer's report.
Good to mine, which one had blood on it? If I'm painful, the bloody dog was one.
Would it be safe to assume that the only thing we can conclude from that incident is that both dogs belonged to Ms. Rollins and she was done? They were not in her care at the time?
Both dogs belonged to Ms. Rollins. Both dogs attacked or ran towards lady. I took it as both dogs did the biting. So that's why both dogs had a form.
And both dogs were not in her care at the time.
Correct, they were running.
Does the complaint have any questions for the panel and witnesses?
I do have a question of when Marvin was licensed with the town of Shasberry, what the date was today?
Why he was licensed with the town of Shasberry? Because I had spoke to the town clerk of the north Bennington, who said that if I could have him out of the county. In Shasberry or Powell, then things would could potentially work for him. So we set him up on fifteen acres of land out in the middle of nowhere with a cattle and. Uh, my dog, a shock collar, a new muzzle.
Anything else?
A ten by ten by six encaged enclosure with. A metal roof on it so that it can't get up out of it.
Do you have any pictures of him?
What?
Do you have pictures of him?
You mentioned there's no roof on those.
There's metal there to be put on the roof. It's not installed yet. It was just, it was just moved Shasberry's afternoon, two thirty.
If you're being quite right, concern is in listening to Officer Crossick, this animal seems to wreak havoc at a confinement facility built specifically to contain. Vicious animals and it's managed to escape at least twice, my friend, from me. And I'm seeing this thing here and and I'm no expert on it, but that one, so I'll heck of a lot flimsier than what the animal that's. Invested in for an animal containment facility. Again, as I said, I'm. I'd be limited to Shasberry, central, vicious animals who are town. I'm not on board with the idea of us seeing one in Shasberry.
The dog is moving to my property, my home. And I'm going to take control of the animal. For a period of time and get it some training. I've been around town. There's nobody in this room that knows who I am.
I never mentioned.
Yeah, that's relevant.
And I'm not sure who are you.
And and I just, I think that Marv deserves a chance, has some serious training. He's going to be neutered next week. And um. I think he deserves to have a chance. I agree. I've been bit by dogs numerous times in my life. I used to sell insurance. I used to be a zoning.
Mr. Watson, if you'd address the board rather than me, it would be inappropriate.
I'm addressing the whole board. You spoke to me. I'm speaking back to you, sir. And. I've been been, I sold insurance for years. I've paid dog claims when I was in the insurance business. And I think I have two dogs of my own. And I'm going to take Marvin under my control and I'm going to give him some train. I trained my wife's service dog and I think I have the ability to train Marvin to be a respectable leashed man. He will not be out of that pen without a muzzle on. For the next period of time until I feel that he is safe. And I will come back to you and tell you when he's going to get unmuzzled if he ever does. He may not. He may not be able to be trained. If he can't be trained, then I'm going to recommend that he be put down.
Question. And Mr. Watson, are you a dog trainer?
Not an official dog trainer, but I've had I've had dogs in my possession for seventy years.
We have a question here, Tom.
Mr. Watson, what I understand, I understand, but my concern continues to be that we have one of our citizens who is physically scarred. And for understand a small child who is emotionally scarred. And I am very uncomfortable with the prospect of that being perpetuated. Everything you say are good intentions, I respect. I got one, but I'm old enough to remember my grandmother saying the road to hell is paved with blood.
Good intentions.
Thank you, sir.
You're also taking a pet away from a young man right back there. That is, that's his buddy and friend. And you're doing, you're doing that in the same way. You're treating, you're treating him. Punishing him for what the dog did. And we don't know all the circumstances to the incident that's being reported.
Really, I got you in a back and forth, but in my realm, if you're representing the community. Life, there's a lot of hard lessons to be learned in life. And I believe that had this dog been properly cared for and supervised, we all would be at home with our families tonight. Now, I am not diminishing the child losing its pet. But I also, as a healthcare professional and as a parent, as a grandparent. I I cannot accept what I have learned tonight. I'm sorry, sir. And I'm, I understand your concerns. But I have a bigger responsibility in this this community, safety of this community. And I'm not hearing anything that makes me think. Town of Bennington, town of Shasberry or Powell are safe with this dog. It's broken loose from confinement multiple times. It has broken loose from leashes, guides, and its own residents. The owners or the individuals charged to supervising this animal, dead, for what I understand. Have not lived up to the full expectation and commitments they made. And as a result, members of the community have been hurt and the safety of the community has been compromised. So I'm not going to get into a back and forth, not going to be authoritarian, authoritarian, but that's my position, sir. And I've not heard anything change that tonight.
All I'm going to say is prove to me that it was Marvin on the prior incidents and I'd be standing right next to you. But we can't prove that. None of us can. And you're you're saying that it was him, but we can't prove it. And in a court of law, it's the preponderance of the evidence, and we haven't found the preponderance of the evidence in the situation.
Respectfully, Mr. Rollins, then.
Yes.
But a level four vicious animal is only required to seriously link in jury pressing points.
Thank you.
And I think we're here tonight because advice and instruction given in prior incidents wasn't taken by this dog's owner.
I don't.
There's nothing debating that, sir.
I I'm not debating that.
Okay, let's um, I'm going to win the fight. Um, Officer Crossick, rebuttal in final words?
I have a question that I would address to you.
Oh, here it is.
My question is. Maybe it's to them as well. I understand the love that a child has with a pet. I had children, I have grandchildren, and I have pets. This is not taking something away from that young boy that's the friend and buddy of the dog. It's protecting him. And I guess my question is, if he were to have a friend over. The problem with the dog is it's unpredictable. If he were to have a friend over. And that dog bit that friend in the neck. The leg, lost an arm. If that could. This board sitting here tonight. Go to sleep that night, knowing that they did nothing with all the evidence that was brought before them. And could the mother of the boy or the step grandfather, whatever he would consider himself to be, sleep at night, knowing that? This dog, though sad as it may be, needs to be put down. It needs to be. And I'm a dog owner and I understand how difficult this is. And my last, so I guess my question is, how would all of you feel if we were back here in a month? Facing the same situation and. Um, I I just don't understand. What I guess I wanted to say was also that. Whether it's Mar, was Marvin and Piper in the three other incidences? It was both of them. But one person's life is changed now because of Marvin. Viciously attacked, walking out of her house to go to work in the morning and the dog broke. Viciously attacked, walking out of her house to go to work in the morning, and the dog broke the leash, the. I, I wanna know when the last time the dog was put in that fenced-in pen, cause I was just down there not that long ago, and it looked like there was weeds growing around it. And even if the dog is on the leash, I have a video of the dog, the dog's leash is right, walking right in the pathway where they have to walk out. Every single day to go to work, not muzzle, right here, a video. Can you all sleep with yourself at night knowing that you let this happen again?
Oh, thank you.
That's my final word.
You can have your, please, please, no. Have your final statement?
I apologize to everybody that has been hurt or, um, their life has changed and, and this situation, and. Can't do anything to take anything back, I just. Hope that I can have my dog for future.
Fine, at this point, I'm going to adjourn this here, um, if you have your emotional reflection, please.
So.
Seven.
Ten.
All those in favor?
I, I.
Okay, you are all excused, or am I to, um. Been very emotional, I, please be civil with the person, ma'am. Like, where I was looking at, uh, you received a, this is, I didn't have a plan to talk, we're. Paul, noise down a bit, please, sir.
This meeting is still in order, the public session is closed, we'd like to ask you to quietly leave the room.